Alright, well we're gonna start here in a minute or so. And somebody just asked about if I could set this so that it's okay to record. And I can't see where that happens. So I am going to let you know that I just did start recording on my end and we will be sending out a link. So I hope that's helpful to you as well. So is it 12 o'clock? We got one minute, so we're just gonna wait until 12 o'clock to start. And then so go grab a drink or something of water or pop. Alright, well, welcome to our first ever virtual town hall meeting on opioids. I have with me today Dr. Melanie Weiss, and she's just kinda waiting in the background because we felt like the camera wasn't quite wide enough to accommodate both of us at the same time. So we are going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to be presenting a little bit on what Department of Social Services has kinda put together as far as opioids, what they are, what are some of the statistics nationwide and South Dakota specific, some of the resources that have been developed as a result of the funding that's coming into the state. And then we will have an opportunity to hear Dr. Melanie Weiss's story after I go through this short presentation here. So... There we go. We need to talk about, you know, what are opioids? And why we should talk about them? And why has this become such an issue? And why are we hearing this in the news so much lately? And so first of all, just a little general overview. You know opioids are highly addictive narcotics, which are commonly prescribed to treat pain. We have seen an increase in the number of deaths due to opioids since 2012, so it is becoming more and more of a concern. And we need to understand that while they do provide relief for those struggling with chronic pain, we need to make sure that opioids are used only as directed by the prescriber. And I think this is an important message to send to our youth because I think the perception is out there that because they are prescribed by a doctor, they are safe to use. And so we need to kinda clear up some of those misperceptions and teach them that you need to use only as directed and that kind of information. So on this slide, you know, here are some of the most commonly prescribed opioids. Some of the ones that kinda jumped out at me as has hearing often are, you know, codeine, demerol, fentanyl, morphine, oxycodone, things like that. So we can't really talk about opioids without talking about heroin. And I have to admit that in the field of prevention, you know, for quite a few years, we've been getting emails from the national level saying, you know, "The opioid epidemic, the heroin epidemic." And I'm thinking, "It's not really hitting South Dakota." But we have seen it start to hit South Dakota. So what is heroin? It is the illegal and highly addictive opioid drug. We have seen the use increase dramatically in the US among men and women. It's impacted all age groups and almost all income levels as well. So nearly all people who use heroin have also used at least one other drug or alcohol, which is dangerous when we're looking at the risk of overdose. And then we also know that a person who is addicted to the following substances here under this next point is also more likely to become addicted to heroin. And as you can see, for alcohol use, it's only two times more likely to become addicted to alcohol or to heroin. But when you go down to prescription drug abuse, you can see that that increases by 40 times. You're 40 times more likely to be addicted to heroin if you are already addicted to prescription opioids. So you know, when we talk about, talk to students about opioids, we start out by asking them to raise their hand if they agree that prescription pain pills and heroin are the same thing. And you know, we might get a few to raise their hand. And then we talk about how many of us think that using prescription pain pills is as risky as using heroin. And we might get a few more to raise their hand. And so then we really talk about how, you know, misusing prescription pain pills is as risky as using heroin and that they both are within the same drug classification. And that people that are using prescription pain, you know, pills have a more likelihood of using heroin at some point. So then the other opioid we need to talk about is fentanyl. And we've been hearing more and more on the news about that and how it's being laced with other drugs such as marijuana, cocaine, methamphetamine and things like that. And in fact, you know, we've seen our cocaine and methamphetamine rates, use rates stay pretty much the same. But the overdose deaths as a result of those have increased. And we can attribute that partly to them being laced with fentanyl, being mixed in with the meth and the cocaine. So prescription fentanyl is highly addictive and should only be used under the supervision of a doctor. So there is a time and a place for fentanyl, and that is usually being used to treat severe pain caused by advanced cancer. We know that most fentanyl-related harm, overdose and death is linked to the illegally made fentanyl. Okay? So then we need to talk about medication and prescription drug abuse. So it's important to remember that, you know, those prescription pain medications are needed and they are safe when they're used properly and when they are taken as prescribed by that doctor and they can help somebody to recover from a surgery or injury. But people who take prescriptions are at risk of prescription abuse and misuse. And so what does this look like? So misuse really looks like taking more medication than what is directed by the physician or taking it more often. It can also mean taking someone else's medical prescription that wasn't prescribed to you originally. And then it can also mean, you know, mixing it with alcohol or other drugs as well. And then or, and/or changing how you take them. So maybe it's should be taken orally, but you crush it up and you snort it or you inject it. And you know, sometimes that misuse and abuse can be unintentional. You know, take for example, a family member who's suffering from extreme pain on a weekend due to a toothache or a backache or whatever, and that over-the-counter medication just isn't cutting it. And so let's say a family member sees you really suffering and they say, "Hey, you know what? I have some leftover pain medication from when I had this surgery or that, you know, would you like to have it?" And so, you know, they're not like trying to get you, they're not, you know, the typical drug pusher. They're just trying to help you to alleviate that pain. But what we know is that, you know, we don't know how that prescription is going to react with your body chemistry. And your makeup might be different than that person's body makeup. And so it should really only be taken under the direct supervision of that physician. One other statistic that I found particularly interesting in my research is that in 2017, there were enough doses of opiates prescribed to South Dakotans to medicate every South Dakotan adult around the clock for 15 straight days. And this amount has actually decreased because we have seen the prescription, how they're prescribing opioids change. And so in 2016, it was enough to medicate for 17 days every South Dakotan adult. And in 2015, it was 19 days. So you can see that there's been a decrease in the number of prescriptions available in South Dakota. So this is just a list of some of the medications that are commonly abused. The first one up there is over-the-counter prescription still for cough and cold. And we do hear occasionally of, you know, youth using that to get high. I think we do have some protocols in place at the different stores where, you know, you have to show your driver's license. You can only have, you know, two boxes or whatever the case may be. So there have been some policies put in place to try to decrease that misuse and abuse. And then the rest that are listed up here are ones that are prescribed by our physicians. So what are some of the effects and the risks and the signs that we need to look for of someone who might be using opioids? So when we look at opioids and the effect on the brain, we know that opioids activate the receptors, excuse me, in the brain to block pain signals. So we know that opioids are designed to really slow down the body, okay? And with that, it can have the following effects. You know, it can cause drowsiness, confusion, nausea, shallow breathing, and it might even stop a person's breathing completely. However, it can also cause euphoria, especially when more pills than prescribed are taken or when it's mixed with alcohol or another medication or if it's taken for other reasons than it was originally intended. So some of the risks is for opioids, including heroin, we know that that impacts the part of the brain that actually changes or adapts with use. So it requires more and more. It's just a need to constantly be fed. But it's never quite enough. The brain is constantly trying to chase that first high that was ever achieved from taking that drug the first time. So the risks of taking opioids include becoming addicted. And there are two main risk factors that lead to addiction. You know, the first one is the age of first use. And the second one is our biological makeup. So just one second here that we are muting. Okay, sorry about that. I'm just trying to make sure that to alleviate the background noise that I'm muting, who needs to be muted here. And so hopefully that helps. So we want, we know that the research tells us that someone who is drinking or using drugs before the age of 15 is five times more likely to become addicted to drugs and alcohol in adulthood. And then we also know that children of parents with addiction are four times more likely to develop the disease as well. So the next risk is unintentional overdose up here. It's important to realize that overdose can occur with just one use. It can occur on the second time or the third. Really, there is a risk every time. And the risk of overdose increases when a person mixes it with drugs and alcohol. And then there's also the long-term health problems that might occur such as paralysis, coma and death. And it's important to know that misuse is increased when there is past or current substance use disorders, when there are untreated psychiatric disorders, when it starts at a younger age, and social or family environments encourage that misuse. So what are some of those warning signs? What are some of the things we should look for? You know, when the person starts neglecting responsibilities at work, home or school because of the drug use, they're using drugs in risky or dangerous situations such as driving under the road. They're getting into legal issues because of things like stealing to support their drug habit. Their relationships with family members and friends and coworkers are starting to deteriorate. Maybe you've even noticed that they've started to isolate themselves and they've really quit participating in those activities that they once enjoyed. So those are things that we really need to be looking for. And I think that this could be signs of opioid misuse or other misuse as well. If you notice a change in something, it's time to start asking some questions as far as what's going on. Whoops, too far. So these are just some national data on teens and medication abuse, which was produced by BeMedwise. And so it's bemedwise.org. You can go and look for some of these stats yourself. So nearly 1 in 5 teens have reported abusing prescription pain medication to get high. 1 in 10 teens have reported abusing cough medicine to get high. So as you can see, they're using prescriptions more than over-the-counters to get high. And they're more likely again to use that prescription instead of the over-the-counters and rather than the illegal drugs such as cocaine, ecstasy or methamphetamines. And then 1 in 3 teens have reported having a close friend who abuses prescription pain medications to get high. And then every day, over 2,700 teens try a prescription medication for the first time in order to get high. So then there are some different stats and data. First, we'll look at some nationwide. Each day, more than 130 people in the United States die after overdosing on opioids. And just to go along with that, we also know that more than 1,000 people are treated in ERs each day for prescription opioids for not using them as directed. When we look at the leading cause of accidental deaths in 2017, the leading cause was overdose deaths with 70,306. And of those overdoses, 67.8% involved in opioid. So the leading opioid was fentanyl with 28,400 deaths, heroin at 15,400 deaths, and prescription opioids at 14,400 deaths. So those three opioids, fentanyl, heroin and prescription drugs, those combined caused more deaths than car crashes or than accidental gun deaths, which also included homicides and suicides. So as you can see, this is something that really needs to be addressed is the overdose epidemic that we have going on. And then the economic burden of prescription opioid misuse in the US is estimated to be at $78.5 billion each year. So when we look at South Dakota... As you can see, the top line here really looks at all drugs that were implicated in drug-related deaths. And then the bottom line, the purplish line there, is opioid-related deaths. So as you can see, like from 2012 through the current year, we've seen an increase in the drug-related deaths and especially the opioid-related deaths. When we look at this slide, you can see that in 2017, methamphetamine was the number one drug for the number of deaths, 22 deaths as a result of methamphetamines. 12 of those only had methamphetamine in their system and 10 of them had two or more drugs. And so you can tend to go down the line there. You know, fentanyl was at 12, heroin was at 8, oxycodone was at 5 and etc. I think that you can find this information on the Avoid Opioid website. If not, I can definitely get it to you if you're interested in that. This slide really looks at pain reliever misuse from 2015 to 2016 amongst the 18 to 25-year-olds. And if you'll notice in that middle column there, the South Dakota has a higher rate of use at 8.36% than the nationwide average of 7.82%. This really looks at the treatment data for fiscal year 18. If you'll notice, alcohol use is still the number one substance use disorder. And then followed by amphetamine use at 24%, cannabis use at 15%, and then opioid use is at 3% and then use of other drugs is at 2%. So this comes from our Department of Social Service. The treatment providers have to input the information into a system and then it's compiled by Department of Social Service as far as what are people receiving treatment for through the state-funded treatment centers. So what can we do? You know, we live in rural South Dakota where we're very trusting of our neighbors. And oftentimes, we might leave our house or our car unlocked just thinking that, you know, nobody's gonna bother with it. Well, I can tell you that I've gone to coalition meetings from very rural South Dakota to places like Watertown and Aberdeen. And I hear the same stories no matter where I go that, you know, somebody was caught breaking in to get a prescription. They didn't think somebody was home and there was somebody home or they noticed that things were missing. And oftentimes, it might even be from a family member or a friend. So really, what we need to do is do some due diligence of making sure our prescriptions are locked up. They're not in the medicine cabinet where it's easy access to anybody who comes to use our bathroom, that kind of thing. Making sure to keep it out of reach of our children, family, friends and any visitors that might come into our house. And then for those prescriptions that we are no longer using, we need to make sure that we are also disposing of them properly and not just keeping them for, quote, "the rainy day" like we used to do, right? And so there are some different options for that. There are drop-off locations where we can bring our medications that are approved and on the DEA website. In our area of the state, Watertown Police Department and the Watertown, or Cuddington County Sheriff's Office, they're open 8 to 5 each day to have prescriptions dropped off, no questions asked. And then I do wanna promote, we are having a take-back day in the Watertown area on April 27th. It's a Saturday from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And you can take your prescriptions to the police department at that time as well. So one other option besides the Monday through Fridays, April 27th from 10 to 2, to the Watertown Police Department. And then if you can't get to a drop-off location, we have these, let's see, where's the camera? These disposal packets where you can get these. We have these available at the Human Service Agency. I know that some pharmacies also carry them. And what you would do is you would take your prescription bottle, rip off your label, throw that away. Whatever prescriptions used in there, you put it, you fill it with like half warm water, put the prescription packet in there, shake it up, and it just makes it into a gooey mess so that nobody can take that and then you can just, you can throw it away. If you aren't in the area of being able to get those kinds of things, you can mix it with some, you know, yucky substances like coffee grounds or kitty litter or things like that as well. It is not recommended that you flush it down the toilet anymore or just throw it away in general without mixing it with something icky because somebody can dig it out and take it from there. So what can we do if we're concerned about somebody who might be abusing opioids? We do have some resources available in South Dakota as a result of some federal funding that has come into our state. There is a South Dakota Opioid Resource Hotline. That is 1-800-920-4343. And if you are concerned about anyone who might be having issues with opioid abuse or if you're concerned about yourself, if you call that number, they can help you to find local resources to be able to assist you and help you to know what the next steps might be. Or if you're of the next generation and you prefer to text, there is also a texting number and that is 898-211. You would just text opioid to that number and then they're gonna help guide you through what resources are available as well. So once you reach out to them, you know, there are local treatment providers. If you'll notice the DSS website down there, if you click on that link, it's gonna bring up what is the closest one to you according to your county. If you need that link, I can surely send it out to you. Just send me an email after this and I can do that. After you contact that local treatment provider, you know, a trained clinician is going to do an assessment to determine, you know, what would be the best route of services for you? You know, would it be inpatient, would it be outpatient? You know, what might that look like? And then they're going to recommend what services that you should go to and help you to look at options that way. Then there is medicated assistant treatment, which we have heard a lot about in the past few years as well. I feel like it's gonna be more and more common in the future than maybe what we've seen in South Dakota here in the past. But what that is, is it helps, it uses FDA-approved medications and it looks at also combining that with counseling and behavioral therapies to really provide that whole patient approach to the treatment of substance use disorders. And there are some common misperceptions out there associated with MAT. And that is that, you know, well, why would you substitute one drug for another? But really, these medications, they can help to relieve those withdrawal symptoms and those psychological cravings that are caused by the chemical imbalances in the body. And so they're really to help promote a safe and controlled level of medication to help overcome that abuse of the opioid. So clients can work with loved ones to look at what that might look like. And then again, if you go to the website, you can find where that might be an option. Then there's one more resource that few people are really aware of, and that is Face It Together out of Sioux Falls. And what that is, is peer coaching. It really combines science-based peer coaching for someone who's suffering from addiction and including those who are loved ones as well. It doesn't just have to be the person with the addiction. And it is set up as a long-term support and can be offered via video or phone coaching so anyone can really take advantage of that service. It's gonna offer some personalized support. It's gonna help with treatment. And the nice thing is that, like I said, it can be set up anytime via video. It can be set up anytime via phone call. So it's flexible and convenient to you. And there has been some proven outcomes that this can be beneficial. And then this is just some of the things that they make sure that they offer. They personally experience coaches, evidence-based approaches. They set it up to meet weekly or when needed. And they provide emotional and practical support. So maybe if you're even struggling with, I don't know, you know, my daycare is closing, who can I call? They can help to find some resources for that to kind of alleviate that stress. So there's just different supports that they can help to provide. And then they can help with that behavior change and goal setting and really management of that chronic disease that they are trying to manage. So South Dakota on the Avoid Opioid SD website, you will find their strategic plan and what that might look like. And then on that website, you're also going to find some personal stories. You'll see Dr. Melanie Weiss on there, which you'll be able to see personally here. Some good resources on this website and I would highly recommend you go to that. It's going to also include, you know, what are those opioids? What do they look, you know, what are some signs and symptoms? Kind of what we've gone over today. What you should do if you need some help? Where are those resources located? So even the treatment locator should be listed on this site as well. And then any data, if you're ever interested in looking at, you know, what are the use rates? What are the overdose rates? Things like that, that should all be found on there as well. And so with that, my portion is kind of over. I am going to turn it over to Melanie here. And so I'm going to stop sharing my screen and then I'm going to just have video for Melanie here.
Alright, hi everybody. This is all new to me too, so what kind of exciting. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about my story and I always feel it important to start with my childhood and just briefly talk about that because I actually was born and raised right here in Watertown. But I was also raised in a very normal, two-parent, middle-class, very loving home. In fact, my parents are still married today. You know, and I was a very average student in high school. I liked sports. I was very dedicated. When I decided I wanted to do something, I would get that accomplished. You know, I went on to optometry school. I worked very, very hard to get into optometry school. I didn't necessarily have the grades really to get in, but in undergrad, it was something I set my mind to and accomplished that. When I got out of optometry school, I decided at some point I wanted to open my own practice, be my own boss, you know, just kinda have the whole package. And yeah, I worked really hard to do that. And I did accomplish that. I was very fortunate, very lucky, very successful in the beginning to the point where I was able to add on two other times. And the reason I say those things is just so that people can get a little bit of an appreciation as to the zest, the drive, the passion that I had in life. And that, again, if I set my mind to something, I was going to be able to accomplish that. I would work my butt off to get that accomplished. I also had three daughters that were very, very close in age, loved them, raised them, nurtured them. You know, I was a good mom. I still feel I'm a good mom today, but I was a good mom. And then I had my very first surgery. I had an emergency appendectomy done. And then I had two surgeries after that. So within a three-year timeframe, I had three surgeries. The first two surgeries, I used the prescription opioid pain medication, pretty much as prescribed. And by the third surgery, I thought I knew best. I had taken pharmacology classes in optometry school and in my undergrad, and I knew what opioids and other pain medication and other drugs could do to the brain. But I also knew that I knew myself, my mind, my body very well. And so I knew that I would know if I was taking too much. And so it truly started out very innocently. Instead of taking, you know, two, one to two Vicodin or Hydrocodone or Percocet every four to six hours, I took two and a half. And then I took three, and three and a half, and four. And it just slowly continued to build up. And again, as that kept building up, my mind never told me, Melanie, this is a little too much. You probably should tone back a little bit. Never once did my mind go there. In fact, I continued just to keep increasing the number I was taking. You know, it got to the point where I was going back to the surgeon time and time again for refills. You know, what started out as pain management very quickly went into, these pills are something I need to get me through the day physically, mentally, emotionally. And I felt like without those, I could not function. I truly felt that those opioids made me a better person. You know, I felt I was a better eye doctor, a better mom, a better boss, a better neighbor, a better wife. And then if I didn't have those things, I couldn't carry on a conversation with anybody. I didn't feel like I could think properly if I didn't have those pills in my system. And so, you know, they really started becoming my everything. And I didn't realize that at the time. Now I can look back at that and see that. But when I was in the midst of that, I was not able to see that my whole world was starting to revolve around that to the point where I actually started taking from my own family members. I started taking from my parents' home and what they had in their medicine cabinet. I took from my sisters, my brother, my own husband, my children, anybody in my immediate family members' circle. I was in their cabinets, and I was taking any pain medication that they had. When I had cleared everything out that they had, I then thought it would be a good idea for me to start writing out pain medication to people that I knew for my personal use. And I made up all kinds of stories of, you know, me slipping on the ice and hurting my back to, you know, twisting my ankle in softball. You know, any excuse you name it, I made it up. And I would tell the particular individuals. So for example, my family members or my neighbors or friends or actually even some of my own employees. If I write out this prescription for you, just this one time, will you go fill it for me? And, you know, I promise I'll get into the doctor when things slow down, when my schedule slows down and find out what's wrong. And I knew that that was not okay to do as part of my code of ethics as an optometrist. But my mind told me I needed those things. Those are the things that are allowing me to function in life. And so even though I knew it was against my code of ethics, I truly thought it was okay because it was what I needed. You know, and this is where those drugs start changing your brain chemistry to the point where the things that you would know deep down are not okay when you're clean and sober, all of a sudden now, your mind is playing tricks on you to, you know, figure out any way that you can get these substances. So eventually, my brother-in-law turned me in for writing out a prescription to my nephew. And I was turned over to my state board and the DEA. My DEA license was taken from me. And I was actually okay with that because I thought, well, then I won't be writing prescriptions and maybe I can quit taking these things. My state board put me on 12 months of random urine drug screens, and I was okay with that too. Because I thought, well, now I have some accountability, I can quit. Nobody knew I had a problem or an issue except the DEA, the Watertown Police Department, and my state board. I was so shameful that I did not want anybody to know. And, you know, I think that shame is what prevents a lot of people from coming forward. And that's why I go out and do what I do now is to let people know that this is a disease, and should you find yourself in the grasp of this, it's not something to be shameful of. Ask for help before it gets to the point where my story gets. So even being on 12 months of random urine drug screens, I knew that if I used and I had a positive drug screen, I would most likely lose my license. And I did not want to lose my license. I absolutely loved what I did. The problem is, is that I could not quit. And I always get emotional when I say that because it truly sounds so simple. You know, just quit. I had done all these other things in my life that were really, really tough and really hard. And I thought this would be the easy thing. And this was one thing I couldn't do. I actually made it through 12 months of random urine drug screens while still using. I manipulated the system. I got through the 12 months, and then I really started using. I started doctor shopping. I went from one doctor to the next, to dentists, to nurse practitioners, anybody that I knew that could write out an opiate pain medication. I was in their office or on the phone making up ailments I didn't have to get these pills. And even then, doing that, I still didn't think there was anything wrong with it. Then the prescription monitoring program came out where they started monitoring what doctors were writing, what prescriptions, what patients were getting those prescriptions, how many refills they were getting. And I thought, okay, I have to quit because I can't get flagged. If I get flagged, my state board's going to find out, and I'm going to lose my license. So again, I went through another round of trying really, really hard. You know, I did all sorts of different internet research, trying to figure out what's the best way. I think I tried them all, and I still couldn't get off of them. The only thing that I did not try is I did not ask for help. I didn't reach out to anybody. So I no longer go doctor shop. I no longer can write out prescriptions for myself. I have no pills. I've cleaned out all the cabinets in my, in my family's medicine cabinets. And so this is the point in the story that you'd think I would have thought this has gone too far. And even doing this, I still, my brain still did not tell me this has gone too far. But I start going into people's homes. And that's really hard to swallow still today because that's not who I am, but that's who I became. You know, when those drugs grab a hold of your mind like that, absolutely nothing is off limits. So I started going into people's homes, going through their cabinets. Sometimes I went into their homes when they were home. I would find an excuse to be in their house, whether that be checking up on my daughters, whether that be going in and seeing how a friend is doing, if they were sick or had a surgery, anything I could think of to get into somebody's house and then ask to use the bathroom and then go through their cabinets and take the pills and walk out. And sometimes I went into people's homes when they weren't home. If I knew that they were going to be at work or at one of their kids' events or at church or any type of thing where they weren't going to be at home, I would go in their house, go through their cabinets, and take any pills that they had. And when I would get in my car with these pills in my hand or in my pocket, what went through my mind is, you know, these people should actually thank me. That's how truly distorted and twisted my entire thought process was that the fact that I was in somebody's home without them okaying it, and I took something that wasn't mine, I thought they should thank me. So it all came to an end about two and a half years ago. I was seeing patients. I had about 15 minutes in between two of my patients, and I walked out of the back door of my clinic, walked down the street about a block, half a block, went into somebody's home that I knew that they were going to be at work. And I took their pills, walked out. And when I walked out, the Watertown detectives were standing there waiting for me. And even when they showed me their badge, I never once thought I was going to be arrested. Not because I thought I was too good to be arrested. It simply just wasn't even part of my thought process. And again, drugs do not allow you to see the consequences behind your actions. I was arrested, and when I was put in the back of the cop car, handcuffed, I just took this big, huge breath. It was finally, this whole thing was finally over because for eight-some years, living a life where all you can think about, the first thing I would think about when I got up in the morning is, do I have enough pills to get me through the week? Do I have enough to get me through the day? Do I have enough to get me out of bed? And if I don't, how am I going to get those? How am I going to get away from my family, my husband, my kids, my employees, my patients? How am I going to manage all this? And it is overwhelmingly exhausting to live that life, day in and day out. And I truly, at that time, thought that that was how my entire life was going to be. I couldn't see past that. I couldn't see that, that I could function or live without chemicals in my body. So to have it finally be over was, was actually a really, really good feeling. And one thing I always tell, whether I'm talking to kids or talking to adults, is that if it was not for the people that thought that my behavior was odd for me to be going into people's homes all the time, finding reasons to go to people's homes, if they did not come forward and contact the police department, who then started an investigation on me, which led to my arrest, which led to me going to treatment, which led to me being clean and sober, which led to me being here today, educating people. Still, I'm here as a mom for my kids. I'm here as a wife for my husband. If it was not for those people, I truly honestly feel that I would no longer be here because of the amount of pills that I was taking. I am pretty sure I wasn't, I wouldn't be here. So, you know, if you see those behaviors that just don't add up, I always tell people, go with your gut. Your gut tells you a lot. And if something doesn't feel right, it's probably not right. And turn that information over. I know a lot of us never want to be that person that tattles on somebody or get somebody in trouble. But don't look at it that way. If you turn somebody over and that's the one thing that saved that person's life, how great is that, that you get to walk around and for the rest of your life knowing that you saved somebody's life? You know, I've been able to thank the people that have turned me over because they truly saved my life. So I went to treatment after I was arrested. I went, I thought I was going to be there for 30 days because that's what I had seen on TV. But once I had gotten there, they said, no, you're going to probably need to stay about three months. And so I did end up staying that time. Best decision I made. Because getting back into society and doing just simple, normal tasks like washing the dishes, you know, going out and getting groceries, getting gas, something so simple was so unbelievably hard for me to do without chemicals in my body. So I had to learn how to do all those things over being clean and sober. And so the more time that, you know, an individual can spend in treatment, I feel the better. And I did everything they told me to do. They told me to give a sponsor, I got a sponsor. They told me, you know, you need to go to as many recovery meetings as you can. I did that. They told me, after you get done with treatment, you should do outpatient treatment as well. I did that. Everything, I want to do everything I could so that I wouldn't go back to that life again that I was living. I was facing six felonies when I got home from treatment. I had to deal with my legal battles. I did take a plea agreement. I pled guilty to one count of second-degree burglary and two counts of misdemeanor trespassings. I was sentenced to 180 days in jail, and I was given credit for the time that I spent in treatment. So I spent 110 days in the Cuttington County Jail. And that experience for me, believe it or not, was actually exactly what I needed. One, I truly felt I did deserve to go to jail for what I did. Two, it really allowed me to see the awful effects that drugs and alcohol have on so many people. And that until you truly decide that, you know what? I cannot touch another mind-altering substance again the rest of my life or I will be back in somebody's home again, I needed to see that. I needed to see these people that were in jail and they were repeat offenders because they thought they could just go out and have one drink or they could just go out and take one pill just to subdue their feelings at that time. My state license was suspended for 18 months. I just got it back in January. So I've been back seeing patients for about four months, which is a fantastic feeling. You know, but the other thing is, is just being there for support. Without that support that I had from my family, my employees, the community, you know, the other health professionals, whether it be the counselors, the support from the people in the recovery community, that's huge. You know, obviously, I don't enable anybody, but the support is amazing and truly helps me get through days when I struggle. And I still struggle. I still have days where I think that the best thing for me would be to go find some pills to go subdue my emotions, whether I'm angry, sad, disappointed, challenged. There's still that part in my brain that thinks those are the answer to all my problems. But I just pick myself up and I get through that day, and the next day is always a better day. So I know we were going to leave it open for anybody that maybe had any questions. Anything else you want me to touch base on? So are there any questions? You could use your chat thing, I think. Is there anything else that you wanted to cover?
You know, I mean, one thing that I think that I hear a lot of is that, you know, people really, truly think that, there are some people that really, truly think that, you know, once an addict, always an addict, or once an alcoholic, always an alcoholic, and they're going to amount to nothing. But I have seen through the treatment that I've been through, I have seen-
I have seen through being in recovery for two and a half years, that if you get the substance, the drug, out of the individual, they're a normal, working person, a productive member of society, and they can get back to themselves again. And that doesn't happen in two weeks. You know, it doesn't happen sometimes in two months. It takes a long time to get, you know, the mind back to where it should be. But it's a, you know, it's a daily process that us addicts and alcoholics have to go through to keep ourselves on track. And, you know, if you have, if you know people that are struggling or if you know somebody that's in recovery, give, give them a chance, whether it's in a job. Because if, if they're not actively using or drinking, you know, they're on the right track. And the longer they can stay away from that substance, the better chance that they have of, you know, beating it altogether. You know, you talked about not reaching out for help was one of the things you didn't try. And I think one of the reasons might have been because of the stigma. Yeah. Surrounding it because you were afraid, what would people think of me? And you didn't want people to know, so you lived in your own world, right?
Absolutely.
When we do like mental health first aid trainings, we talk about, you know, how can we reduce that stigma? And one of the things that we talk about is, I know that you referred yourself as an addict. And what we talk about in mental health first aid is not labeling yourself because that really encourages that stigma. But maybe talking in more of a language of being a person first who lives with that addiction. So I'm a person who lives with opioid addiction. I'm a person who lives in recovery or, so rather than referring, and so I don't, what are your thoughts on that? I guess I've never had the opportunity to ask somebody. This is kind of what we talk about.
I mean, I like that. I think that's a good idea, especially if you're somebody who's scared of that term addict. You know, for me, I've been in recovery for a while, so I'm okay using that on myself. But I think, you know, bringing somebody in that's new, that doesn't maybe want to, to have that label, I think that's really, really good.
And I think it would also help them understand that, you know, this is a chronic brain disease that you have. So, and, and that you, this is going to be a process to live in recovery. And it's going to be a day-by-day thing. And there's going to be good days and there's going to be bad days. And you're going to have to know what those self-care things are or even professional care things that you might need to reach out in order to continue with that lifelong process, lifelong journey, right?
Right. And I think too, the more people that can get out and tell their story. When I was in treatment, my counselors had said, you know, Melanie, you have a pretty amazing story. You need to go out and you need to talk about it. And I remember sitting in treatment and telling the, my counselors, absolutely not. I am, no, I'm going to get home and I'm going to try to just put this all behind me. And, you know, then I had an opportunity where one of the radio stations had me come on and tell my story and, and they had some questions for me. And it was so unbelievably healing for myself to do that. And then just to see how many other people that, you know, we can help impact. And so just the healing process. And so I think the more people that can get out there, you know, I did. I truly thought I was the only healthcare professional that had this issue. And that's why I was so shameful and quiet about it. But after going into treatment, you know, being around all sorts of, you know, different individuals, you know, everybody from, you know, clergy pastors to nurses, to teachers, to, you know, surgeons, to stay-at-home moms, grandmas, grandparents, you know, it's the whole gamut. And so the more people that get out there and talk about their story, the less likely that somebody else that's maybe suffering is going to say, you know, it might not be a bad idea for me to talk about this and, and go get some, some help and ask for help.
No matter what substance it is.
Right, absolutely. Yep.
All right, so let's see, are there any questions here? Well, seeing none, do you have anything else to add, Melanie?
You know, for those of you that walked in to listen, thank you. One, you know, she already talked about it, but I'm going to reiterate it again. Do not save your medicine. And if you really feel like you want to save it, lock it up in a, you know, a gun cabinet or someplace that nobody can get to it. Because unfortunately, there's too many people out there like me that once that drug grabs a hold of your mind, nothing is off limits. Those people that you thought you could trust. You know, my mind was 100% totally focused on how can I get that drug? Because to me, that drug was what was keeping me alive.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Thanks for logging in and I will have a recording available soon. And I'll send that out to you guys so that you can disperse it to whoever you would like. Thank you.